We encourage all voters to be. Hey, Mr. C. You want to take up the right of way?
You want, we'd like to come up here and address what you.
Go up there or?
Right there. That'll be fine unless you have.
I got some, I got copies, two copies, so you won't look at it as.
Well, we just, you explain what your situation is and I'll see if whether there's actually something we need to even look at.
There's four families that live on Howard Delauder that lives there Monday, uh, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, however you want to do it. There is two families that come in on the weekends. Well, the one family will be coming in on the weekends. James, we have a private road that goes up from Middle Cove. It comes up and goes up, up on top of the hill. Our driveways split off, each person's driveway splits off this road. Howard Delauder is our right of way, our private road. It was, when it was done, it was ten feet wide with six to eight inch buffers on each side. There was a surveyor come out to do Wetzel's and Nims because Curly and them sold property to Vernon. Vernon's making a new road. James had this surveyor put these pins up along his property. Now, James went out, he got mad at us, mainly he got mad at me, and put up these poles. Now, these poles are not on his property line. As a matter of fact, they're on our road, cutting our road down from ten feet with six to eight inch buffers on each side to nine feet with no buffers. One area is eight and a half feet. I had the fire department come out and ask them to survey our, our, our road because that's what they're doing, the new program for people that live out in the boonies or have these goat paths, you know, going down the road. And with these poles up, I gotta sit down, sorry.
Sure, sure.
With these poles up, there's no way that the fire truck can make the turn going in this way. He's cut, there's, he's already cut the poles out, out towards the road. The fire trucks would have to go three point ten miles down the road, one at a time, get turned around on Coyote Run Road, then come up the road and start taking out poles. Because, and, and with, if the poles and the pins, or he ma, he finishes this fence, it's gonna eliminate the water truck, which we need because there's no fire hydrants up there. Uh, it's gonna eliminate two of their engines, and one of them is the hose truck. So, if there's a fire or anything up there, as it stands, we can't come up the road, they can't come up the road. And it would take, uh, I have a, a copy from, um, RJ Poe, he's the captain, and Matthias Baker, uh, Baker thing. And he said, he said, the only thing he can do is if he gets a call and you guys can't help us, get this, just ask him. Just have somebody come out to ask James, say, James, move the pole, move the fences over. Off your property, off the property, on your property, and off Howard Delauder's private road. That's what we want the petition for.
Okay, I, it, you definitely have raised some concerns, it seems. But the only question we have, and the reason we have our, the prosecuting, Hardee County prosecuting attorney here, is to decide whether, is to give us advice over on whether we can do it. You mentioned ask, but it's gonna come down to a deed and the survey, where it, where it, where it get, where it, where, with the allowances for the road, and whether we would even be the ones who make that decision or whether that would have to be taken to civil court for a judge to decide that.
These are the surveyor's pins, okay? Now, this is how close it is down to the edge of the road. This is the one, this is the first pin, this is the second pin, this is the third pin, this is the fourth pin. Fifth pin is down, got lost in a water pipe. This is the sixth pin. We're not worried about these pins, it's from here to there. And it's like five tenths, I think the, uh, fire department says it's five tenths of a mile down the road. This is what it's supposed to look like. This is how he's got it, up here and around here. And then, like I said, see this way down here, see the poles up here? This area here is eight and a half with a tree sitting right up beside it. My car is seven feet wide, and on that area, there's too much. There's only this much room on each side of my car with a mirror. And like I said, um, your ambulance, the, that one guy here that was here first, he even said it needs to be ten feet wide. I pulled up the documents on the road. Uh, our right of way, our right of way was, it measured out. Fire department, even here, the fire department says, the whole road is measured out and it's supposed to be the measurements of the right of way off of where these fences are. You know, and like I said, the fire department says, if he comes in, they gotta go down the road, get turned around one at a time, come back in and start taking out poles.
The problem, the problem is the county commission really can't solve your problem. You're gonna have to file lawsuit, is what you're gonna have to do. I mean, the county commission can't affect his legal right, like, they couldn't, any more than they couldn't widen it, they couldn't narrow it. I mean, you're not hiring a lawyer, it's a civil matter.
Okay.
I mean, it's a civil matter, you need to get it before the circuit judge, he's the only one that has jurisdiction.
So the circuit judge, and how much is that gonna cost us? Because like I said, um, um, Curly and Donna and Curly, Wetzel, Donna, the Curly, uh, Wetzel, Mr. Wetzel had three heart attacks. He can't go nowhere.
Right.
I'm on disability, I'm, and, um, you know, Vernon and, uh.
Parker.
Yeah, Vernon Parker, him and his wife, his wife's been in the hospital one or two times, and we rely on this.
But the problem is the county commission really can't, uh, just, just as they couldn't make him widen it, they couldn't narrow it. I mean, the, the county, the only one that can do that's the circuit judge. I mean, you're gonna have to get in front of the circuit judge. I mean, you can do it yourself, I'd recommend you hiring an attorney, but, you know.
None of us can afford an attorney.
Right.
Unless you can get one that's gonna do it for him.
Right. I mean, that, that's in my advice, you're gonna have to get it before the circuit judge to get him to make a point on it.
Like I said, well, I gotta go and get him anyhow because he's threatened to kill me with a musculature. He's pinned me in between these poles. I got that all wrong, they could get to it.
But I mean, that, he, they're, the circuit judge really don't have a jurisdiction to hear the matter. I mean, because it, it sounds like a right of way dispute, and, and it's talking about the, the width of the right of way and the difference.
Yeah, and like I said, see, here, if you look.
I see exactly what you're saying.
I, my other pictures are better than that one, but like I said, it's just real narrow. And I even got letters, my daughter had a terrible time coming up with her van. You know, you see the picture, like I said. See, there's the pole, here's it on the other side. And that's, my car is seven feet wide, that area right there, they have. He knows he put it on the road, but if anybody goes to move it, or goes to even think about moving it, because Bradley wants to bring his boat, his, it's sort of like a houseboat. He wants to bring his boat out of the water. He can't do that, the people that are moving in can't do it because they can't get the camper things up, up the road.
I, I understand what you're saying, but what, what I'm telling you is the county commission really can't act on this. You're gonna need to get it before the circuit judge. I mean, and, and if you file this, I mean, that may be enough to, I mean, like I said, I'd advise you to hire an attorney because anytime, uh, you, the judge, you always better have an attorney and not have one. But if you present this to the judge, I mean, the judge may, I mean, may not need an attorney.
Well, like I said, uh, it was a legal aid because none of us can afford it.
Right.
And he, he's out of Martinsburg, West Virginia.
Right.
Because supposedly there's none of ramp here.
Does that, does that help you though? Does that help you?
Anyway, it does, but anyway, it don't.
Well, but, it's just trying to make sure that you, you take the right path in what you're trying to do.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's, I mean, I was told, you know, come here and see if you guys can help, you know.
You're, you're doing the right thing, you're, you're finding the right answers. It's not, you know, immediately clear, and that's why we, we asked, um, Mr. C. to come in because he would be, you know, he's the, he's the county's attorney.
Right.
And so, what he's telling you is good advice. I wouldn't want, because, you know, and if what you said is true about the, you know, the threat, so we want this to be in a legal setting where he's told by judge, these have to be moved. You want that to be because that's gonna keep you safe, but also isn't gonna take up your time. And it could be that if you present this, you don't have an expense for an attorney unless you have the one already with legal aid. That kind of answers that question, but you'd be going in the right direction in that case.
Yeah, he's the one, he said, go in front of the commissioners, see if they can help you out. And he said, then, then, he said, your next step is to either sue them. Because as it stands right now, if any of us get hurt, any of us get hurt because of, if the fire department couldn't get up to us, James is held reliable. It is, it is, am I right or wrong?
He could be, I mean, that's, that's up for judge and jury to decide as well.
Well, like I said, he can be held reliable because of him stopping the fire department from getting up there. Like I said, the fire department said it would take him about an hour and a half to get out to us and then start taking these poles out, but then, if you gotta go, Howard Delauder Lane is like, I missed a mile and a half long. Mr. Parker lives on top of the hill. If you gotta get up to that top of the hill, and it's nothing but woods.
So it's not a state maintained road?
No, it's a private road.
Then you need to get it before the circuit judge. Let me tell you a little bit of what I know about it.
Because like I said, this is, this is all woods.
Sure.
You know, this is the end of James' property. Over here is all woods. You know, like I said, by the time, an hour and a half up this road right here.
Yeah, I talked to J T. about that a little bit some time ago. And the way I remember what he said went on, he said, over time, that road is gradually through traffic moved further and further over. And actually, the other guy's fence, if he wanted to run it on the property line, would be in the road, but he set it off the road just so they couldn't get through there when he built the fence, which I understand J T. calling it. It's gonna be a matter of having a survey.
That's why the, the court, the circuit judge will be very important.
That's why I took, actually took the pictures of how he's got it and where the stakes are. And I, this is, this is his, uh, plot, I got his plot. I even got the measurements on the road itself. I had a reference back, but like I said, here's the one stake, here sits the other stake up here. He's got it up on the road and it goes on around. If you look at, if you look at the plot itself, it's supposed to be a straight line here and a straight line over here. Then it starts curving around the road. But like I said, this is where the road is going down. This is the original lines where these two, two trees are here, is the original property line of Kenneth Ashman, uh, James' father. And they, like I said, we want him to move it off here and down here. We don't want, then he can, you don't have to move it all the way here. We just want our ten feet road and our six to eight inch buffers. That's all we wanted, you know?
Well, you want your legal title to.
Yeah, well, see, like I said, this, this, as a matter of fact, this whole road right here belongs to Ben Thomas. It's on Ben Thomas's, it's on his.
What the sheriff's saying is correct is if the road has been gradually moved over.
No, it's not, it, what it is, it's, it's, it's just slowly being right of the way.
Right.
Because see, this road is maintained at all times, we maintain it. And when we, we regravel it, and we never touch the sides. We never touch none of the sides, none of the sides, right here.
My advice is, I'd get before the circuit judge, and he's really the only one that has jurisdiction to help you. I mean, because the county commission really can't get involved in a, I mean, I'm sure they would if they could, but they can't, they can't really assist you.
Well, like I said, I gotta go because he's actually, well, he shot at me, he's already shot at me and Jake once. And I don't wanna go to a magistrate because she's the one that gave him thirty-two guns. And anybody goes to move these things, even the fire department and Tony Wetzel, he's threatened to shoot him. He comes out with guns.
If he does that, I call law enforcement.
I already did.
And they respond?
Their response was, he's.
J T. has been there. And I asked him to go, and he, he looked the situation over. I wish he was here today to explain his findings, but pretty much what he found is pretty much what you're telling her. It's not, it, it's a private drive, a private thing, and literally, we just can't get involved.
Right, we don't have the authority to do anything, you know, I mean, no. The, the county commission's only, they're given their powers by the legislature. And if they're not given a power in something in chapter twenty, they don't have the power to do it. And they're not given the power in chapter twenty to make decisions like this.
Well, like I said.
Basically.
That's it, right there. So, you know, even if we did, we could cause more harm by, by doing something. It's the right, I know it's not, you know, you want it fixed, but you also have to go through the right process. And that's all we're trying to do is help you in what we're telling you.
Well, like I said, um, when I called nine-one-one on him.
Yeah.
The answer I got from the sheriff's department, he was on his property, I was on the road, and it's just a threat.
Well, and that's why I'm saying, we, we have to go, I would do the circuit court thing as soon as, as you can because that will provide answers, and it will also provide documentation, and you have standing there.
And the duty of protecting order as well.
Well, that's what I went for on March fourteenth, because on March eighth, he shot at me and Jake. His whole family went in there and lied about it. And she turned around and gave him back all thirty-two guns. The day J T. was out surveying it, soon as J T. left, he shot for an hour and a half. He shot his guns off for an hour and a half, and you know how he is.
Yeah, I, I know James, don't get me wrong, that's, uh, I hate to, I'm not gonna take sides here.
Oh, I understand that.
I can't do that, and, uh, but, you know, you have a legal right, and I think counsel's the only way you're gonna gain, gain anything.
Well, like I, like I said, the legal aid said, you know, he said, go in front of the commissioners. I think it's your, your secretary or something, she's the one that told me to put it on the docket to stuff.
Well, I mean, that, that's proper, but the county commission is, they're, they're trying to steer you in the right direction. They're trying to tell you that they, they can't help you, you know, but they're trying to steer you in the right direction. Yeah, which is getting in front of the circuit judge.
Like I said, you know, I've just, none of us can afford it, we're all on disability. But, okay, then, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Lucas, I think that's all, unless you want to say anything, we were just about to start discussing amendment two. You want to listen if you got any comments there?
No, I support you one hundred percent, whatever you're saying.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem, no problem.
Is that all we want to do with you now?
There are, there are four amendments on the ballot this fall. Uh, the Secretary of State's office has got a nice little flyer that's available in the clerk's office and elsewhere that kind of talks about it. Amendment one is regarding the clarification of the judiciary's role in the impeachment proceedings. Uh, and that would have, include, again, impeachment proceedings of the House of Delegates or the Senate and specifying that a judgment rendered by the Senate following an impeachment trial is not reviewable by any court in the state. The amendment two is the property tax modernization amendment. And this one seeks to give the legislature the authority to exempt tangible machinery and equipment, personal property directly related and used in business activity, and tangible inventory, personal property directly used in that business activity as well as personal property tax on motor vehicles from ad lorem property taxation by general law. Amendment three is the incorporation of churches and religious denominations amendment. It authorizes the incorporation of churches or religious denominations. And then amendment four is the education accountability amendment. And it's one that's purpose is to clarify that the rules and policies promulgated by the State Board of Education are subject to the legislature review, approval, amendment, or rejection. And the county commission of Hardee County on amendment two has basically taken the stance officially to oppose amendment two, as has Governor Justice and, and several others. Not in, and certainly without a lot of consideration, did we arrive at that decision. You know, everybody would like to see their taxes go away, but the concern is that there's no, uh, sustainable plan been put forward to make sure that the loss of this revenue would be replaced consistently from here on out. And so, uh, we've taken the stance to encourage folks to oppose amendment two. But we certainly appreciate everyone's right to cast their vote the way they see fit. And we would encourage all voters and all citizens to become familiar with what amendment one, two, three, and four say, and how it might affect them, and when they go to the polls on November the eighth, cast their votes accordingly.
Very well put. I like always. Anybody got any comment? No comment? You've done a good job.
Well, we, we've certainly studied this one, this particular amendment, amendment two, uh, to great length. And like I say, we just don't feel that it's in the best interest of Hardee County to, to see that passed.
The worry is the long-term consequences and how that is gonna be made up. Generally speaking, taxes don't decrease, it, it doesn't happen. So there will be a requirement at some point, probably at the county level, to, to increase it. And there's not enough analysis, and there's not enough concrete projections on how that will be made up and how it will work. So, you feel, you're left with only being able to oppose it.
There's so many things that it will affect, and we have no answers on how to fix it. Sheriff's salary, insurance, accessory, school board bonds and so forth, anything that's based on taxation. And if our fee was a tax limit, what would happen to that, at that point? Then we'd have to come back with another fee on top of that to make up the difference. Yet, we'd all be looking for a new job by that time.
That's what I'm understanding, I haven't really studied it, but I've heard it back and forth on Metro News talking about it. It looks to me like it's only gonna benefit businesses anyway, not gonna benefit the common person. And, you know, most people run businesses, have a lot of money anyway, by virtue of having a business. It looks like it's just gonna hurt the common people and benefit the people who've got a lot of money.
What, what this amendment does, it gives the legislature the authority, doesn't mean they have to do it, but it gives them the authority to eliminate those taxes. It also might give them, as we look down the road, even though they tell us, the current legislature, I believe, is well-intentioned. However, looking farther down the road, it might be the place where future legislatures look to make up short gaps in their budget, and then the county loses.
And, and our prediction now, and this is not set in gold, since we're at sixty percent tax base, all these other counties in Virginia are a hundred now. There's where they're gonna push it back on us and have to raise that, and raise property taxes, make up the difference down the road. And that's the scary part, that's the part we don't wanna report.
As one of our esteemed colleagues, who we all know, said, if the state legislature take it the way here, they're gonna put it back someplace else.
And, and, and the big question is, if they got that kind of surplus rate now, where'd it come from? Come from A R P., cares, or wherever? Have they not distributed it around where it was supposed to be? I mean, we got money, we had spent by a certain time. I mean, have they not had to? I mean, there's so many questions that, that you can get them cornered and they can't answer them. You got your answers.
Go to the poll and use it.
All right, no more questions, that's, we'll move on. Miss Wendy, we have you for a whole list of things.
Yeah, Steve, do you wanna do your, are you pressed for time?
No, I'm just curious what the nine-one-one center, as far as the call volume was, who had what this month?
Here, I'm gonna. Paul, he's in a training.
Oh, okay.
Like you were pretty busy.
Yeah. That's about, about three hundred every month, depending on.
Are you good, I mean, I, if he's, if you're pressed on time, you can go ahead and go before me because I.
No, I just wanna tell a little bit about what drug case.
You guys mind that way since?
Pass force, they had, um, sort of three search warrants this month, seized about twenty-five firearms, convicted felons, bought a lot of drugs, still working a lot of undercover cases, a bunch of money. Two pleas in federal court, three arrests in federal court, and three sentences coming up in federal court on a drug case here in Hardee County this month. So we reported to them. Continue to do that. Y'all take care.
Be careful. All right, if you're ready for me, I got, I got stuff, I'm gonna sit right here. Um, the Morefield Fire Department, um, they are hosting their, um, twenty-twenty-three West Virginia State Firemen's Association Convention. Um, it's gonna be held at Canadian Valley next year, August ninth through the twelfth. The fire department is requesting seven thousand five hundred dollars to help with the expenses of this. The fire company chief, Doug Mungold, said that convention's purpose is can, is to conduct their business meeting and determine the legislative, legislative agenda for twenty-twenty-three. The association is responsible for state monies that over four hundred volunteer departments receive each year as well as a state tax break which starts in twenty-twenty-four. The neighboring counties, Menorah and Hampshire counties, have already committed to the amount that they are requesting from Hardee County.
Is this the, uh, association, is Doug the chair of that?
Doug used to be.
Okay.
I think he's still on the board.
He's on the board, but he does, yeah, he's not the president anymore.
It didn't matter, I just, I thought it was.
I can go ahead and make a motion that we approve the allocation of seventy-five hundred dollars to help host the twenty-twenty-three State Firemen's Convention, second.
We're probably moving to second. So you're gonna host the seventy-five hundred dollars to help host the Firemen Association Convention. Is there any more discussion? No discussion, all those favors, they've. No discussion. All those papers seem to vibe saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three ayes. Motion approved.
I have a resolution for us to apply for the, the next cycle, for the grant cycle, for the, the REAP grant, which is actually the Rehabilitation Environmental Action Plan. This is actually going to help aid with recycling of electronical, I mean electronics and things that we can apply for. And we missed it this time. I think the grant was actually through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two, but we are, have that on our radar for next year to, to apply for that. So we want to go ahead and get that resolution signed, so that way we don't have to, have to worry about that.
I make a motion to approve that resolution to apply for the next REAP grant cycle.
I'll second.
I'll just give all that to you.
To do the resolution for the next REAP grant cycle. Any more discussion? All those papers seem to vibe saying aye.
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 Three ayes. Motion approved.
EA Hall's had requested a letter of support. They're actually applying for an HRSA grant. And they needed some letters of support, and they ask us to, they asked the County Commission to write a letter of support for them to apply for the grant. I've drafted a letter that shows our support. Just need you guys to sign that as well.
Is this a continuous care facility, or is this the health?
It's actually what they said was to receive federal financial support each year through the Health Resources and Service Administration, HRSA. I don't know if that sounds familiar. The funds, the funds we receive are used by the healthcare to guarantee the availability of our services to the communities and geographic area we serve.
That's EA Hall's health, not the endless care.
They always, they get done in a year.
Yes, yes. I'll make a motion that we approve the EA Hall's letter of support for their grants. Second.
Properly moved in second. To have, do the letter of support for EA Hall. Is there any more discussion? No discussion. All those papers seem to vibe saying aye.
Aye.
We also have a, I can't even talk, a proclamation to support green light for our veterans. What this says, I'm not going to read all of it, but it just talks about "The residents of Hardy County have a great respect and admiration and utmost gratitude for all men and women who have selflessly served our county, our country, excuse me, and this community and the armed forces. Whereas the contributions and sacrifices of men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And we're Hardy County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid a high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all." And what the National Association of Counties, they're actually recommending to make the, the month of October.
November.
Well, it's actually starts on, that's what, it says it starts in October. The county declares from October through Veterans Day, November the eleventh, "It's time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice for our men and women, uniform transitioning from active service thereof to further." We actually encourage that the observation, the observance of Operation Green Light, Hardy County encourages citizens and a patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all of those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence during this time. We have lights ordered for the courthouse to light up the courthouse for, for this effort. So if you see any, we haven't lost our minds here. We're going to light it up green.
And that's to support the veterans and people, you know, to show our support.
And those lights are being paid for by the county commissioners, not the taxpayers.
So we need to make a motion. I make a motion that we support a proclamation for Project Green Light.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Support the proclamation, Project Green Light. Any more discussion? No discussion. All those papers seem to vibe saying aye.
Aye.
We have a resolution also to apply for the West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Improvement Grant that is offered, where Melbourne is actually obtaining, is it tomorrow?
They came today.
Today, okay, okay.
And they're supposed to get in the bid tomorrow.
Okay, good. I knew that was, I couldn't remember for sure too. So we just need a signature to apply for that, that grant, for the new roof for the sheriff's office.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the president to sign the request for the courthouse facilities improvement grant application. Second.
Let's do one the seventh.
It has, well, it has to be postmarked then.
Postmarked by the seventh. And we're on it. We're, we're in good shape.
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
Is there any more discussion? No discussion. All those papers seem to vibe saying aye.
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 We have another grant that, it's for the Records Management Preservation Board. I'll need a signature for that as well. And Greg, do you want to shed any light on?
And it may be there now. I was still waiting on estimate for the back indexing. Search capabilities back to seventeen minutes.
That's a good question. Those records that used to be up on the third, is it the fourth floor or the third floor?
I got.
You have them?
I see they're in a clock room.
So they're, so you got?
On racks and in boxes and in, in non-acetic.
Good.
This owner has been took care of all that for me.
I'm glad. I was just wondering, wondering where they were, because they used to just sit up there in the sunlight.
Oh, yeah, they were, they weren't in good shape.
They weren't, oh, yeah.
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Properly moved to apply for the caution history grant. Is there any more discussion? No discussion. All those papers seem to vibe saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
And I, I didn't say, I said, I'm guessing it's going to be around twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand.
Of course, they're, they're.
We're ten percent match.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And I'm going to get up to ten, so that's what we're going to.
Yeah.
All right.
We have a resolution for the Local Economic Development Grant Program. The West Virginia Development Office is offering a Local Economic Development Grant Program for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three that is especially designed to help West Virginia communities become better prepared for industrial and related economic development. Just need a signature.
This was one we learned about in the RDA meeting.
Yes.
The RDA, we, we approved one, yeah, at the RDA meeting. And this one is kind of, yeah, goes to supplement that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, and I'll second it.
Properly moved in second. Global Economic Development Grant Program Resolution. Is there any more discussion? No discussion. All those papers seem to vibe saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved.
We have a request from the Arkansas, Arkansas Community Center for ten thousand dollars. They are requesting, the Arkansas Community Association is pleased to present the proposal for review. They were asking for this monies for, a few months ago, our commercial refrigeration unit went bad, and we have not had the available funds to purchase a new one. With all the community outreach that is being done at this building, it is very important that we can provide refrigeration during meals, meetings, and more. We are requesting a grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars to replace the current commercial refrigeration unit with what funds, with what funds are left. We will be fixing up and updating other appliances as well. This actually came from Nancy Smith, from one of the members at the Arkansas Community Center.
And this will be AARP.
This will be AARP. They've actually filled out an application for, for such, and they provided what we need for right now to, to get this on the table.
I talked to her about that and encouraged her to do that.
It is voting, please say.
Yeah, they do say it is polling place.
There is a lot of outreach. There's a lot of use that goes into that place.
I'll make that motion that we approve the Arkansas Community Center's request for ten thousand dollars. Second.
This properly moved in second. To approve the request for AARP funds, ten thousand dollars for Arkansas Community Center. Is there any more discussion? No discussion. All those papers seem to vibe saying aye.
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 Motion approved.
I have a letter to Mr. Brian Farkas, the executive director of the West Virginia Conservation Agency. Logan Wires had, from the Hardy County PSD, the manager from Hardy County PSD. He would like a letter of support to allow for the well drilling, for the test drill, excuse me, to drill test wells in the Baker area. I'm not going to read, it's three paragraphs long.
Yeah, I can give you a little bit of background, but I think we've all probably talked to Logan about this. Just quickly, at the Public Service District, at their facility there at Baker's looking to provide a secondary water source. And that'll be from wells where currently they collect surface water out of the impoundment that's there. And the West Virginia Conservation Agency owns some property that is right nearby where their treatment facility is. And this letter is to request Brian Farkas, who's the program head of the West Virginia Conservation Agency, asking him for permission for our PSD to drill test wells there to see if they could maybe come up with the water that they need to provide that secondary water source for the Baker system. And I make that motion that we approve that letter. Second.
Properly moved in second to approve the letter of support for the secondary water system in Baker Wells. Is there any more discussion? No discussion. All those papers seem to vibe saying aye.
Aye.
Next thing on the list is the Board of Representatives Meeting House Request for AARP Funds.
I haven't caught that letter yet. He was giving it to somebody yesterday to bring in today, but I can't remember who he said.
I'll just go ahead and move to table this to the next meeting.
All right, proper move in second to table this till the next meeting upon more information. Any, any more discussion? No discussion. All those papers seem to vibe saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved to table. All right, Mr. Ewing, you're on.
I have orders barring objections to the estates of Maxine Hall Cross, Teddy Earl Decker, Gary Leo Fletcher, and Kenneth Maxwell Riddman. Those are the smallest states that were done in this. Everything's been published and ran their time. It's basically closed.
All right. Proper move or?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the order barring objections to the estates of Maxine Cross, Teddy Decker, Gary Fletcher, and Kenneth Riddman.
Yes, I second.
Properly moved in second for the order barring objections to these estates. Is there any more discussion? No discussion. All those papers seem to vibe saying aye.
Aye.
And I wish Sheriff was here. I just wanted to note that we did receive the delinquent tax list from the sheriff's office, and I don't remember when the last date. I don't know the dates for sure, because that's, that's not my window, but this tax date, when, let's just say the end of the last day to pay is October thirty-first. Where whoever's, whoever's names are still on that list is going to get sent to the state. States are going to auctions. There probably won't be any more calling on the phone, hey, get in here before we have this auction and stuff, because it's all in the state's hands now. They're going to come to Hardy County and view auctions. They're going to come to Hampshire and view auctions. They took it over statewide. So it's imperative that these people get, yeah, get out and get their.
Yeah. Taxes not like it used to be.
Yeah.
Didn't they turn up the window of when you can replant it? Like three months?
Hey, I, I haven't read that.
I've not read that.
What, what did they do with the?
It's just so time now. Eighteen months it used to be.
Down to like three months now.
Is it three months?
It's not much.
There's some major changes.
It is, yeah.
That's a, that's a big change. Because I hadn't read the bill or anything, because I wasn't, wasn't.
I looked at it, but it's been a while.
Yeah. But I saw an Hampshire review that Nathan, the sheriff in Hampshire, put in our swing. Gave that Sheriff Dawson, you know, I think he's going to focus up and in to let people know too, but I asked Tammy, I said, what's going on, you know, I saw that, and she was telling me all these things, took over all this stuff.
I wonder if Chip out at the radio station would even talk to somebody, you know, if, that'd be an interesting, interesting thing to do.
Yeah, he could probably give it, have the sheriff come in.
Yeah, and just, and just talk to them, because he, he, he's on the news now with this show, so.
This again is another move by the legislature to take power away from the counties. And that's sad. Because you used to be able, in this case, to go to your local sheriff and tax assessor and do this business. Now you're going to have to deal with the state. And the state is not going to be nearly as easy to work with, I'm sure, as those that basically pay the salaries, the elected officials that they'll be dealing with.
And whenever you have to go to Charleston, it's always, it's always difficult.
Well, and I know that, you know, relatively speaking, for working here, I know that, you know, when it comes down to, you know, tax sale, tax time, you know, the ladies in the sheriff's office, they, they diligently work and try to network and find out who this person is connected to, and they try to make a lot of connections.
And then you only have three months now.
I think that's what it is.
It's short, it's short, I forget whether it's three or six. I can't remember, but it is short, pretty significantly.
You don't have to drive down there. I'm sure you can call and get the information.
Right, but still, it's the idea, you know, different thing.
Well, it'll be a hassle.
Yeah. Everything always.
We need to clear my red.
It never goes off without a hitch.
All right, copy of the jail bill for the month of May, forty-two thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars. Farmland preservation collected by the, for the month of June. This is September.
Oh, that's September. I did that, too. Because it didn't have that number yet.
Should be September.
Yeah.
Okay. Twenty-five thousand seven hundred nine dollars and twenty cents. And the payroll register for September the first through fifteenth was ninety-eight thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars seventy-six cents. September the sixteenth through September the thirtieth was eighty-seven thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents.
That difference, remember, there was a sheriff, something like that.
Hold on a second. Every damn two minutes, you might have anything else. All right, minutes, approval of minutes for September the sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Stated meeting, exonerations, settlements, consolidation, orders, payroll registry, clerks reported wheels admitted, executives appointed, clerks reported administrators, curators, and defendants appointed.
I move we approve the minutes, et cetera. Second.
Properly moved in second to approve the minutes for September the sixth. Is there any more discussion? No discussion. All those papers seem to vibe saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. I think that's it.
Does Red have anything?
As always, the congressman's always agreed to support any grant applications with letters of support. So just keep us informed.
I know we did send forth at least one letter of support for an individual from our county to the U.S. Military Academy.
And he's, he has that nomination application, the congressman does, and I know that, so.
Which academy you thinking?
The, the two tops are, it's either West Point or the Maple Academy. That's the two.
That would be wonderful.
We visited the Naval Academy on Saturday, and we really, we got to see the formation. We got to see them do the formation before they go in and eat, you know, eat their lunch meal. They play the bagpipes, that was, that was really cool to see it.
Because we're Friday, Friday, excuse me. We're proud to have a nominee in that mix.
Oh, yes, sir.
Hopefully we have a nominee. You know, we have to have that nomination, so.
No, don't, don't, no pressure now.
No pressure, but.
I can hear you, boss, I can't go down to Oregon. This thing goes sideways.
They done ran me out of the county.
They're digging, they're digging a test well down there at Baker, and they might say, ain't gonna work, kill it in.
Thank you, Red.
Now, what you're talking about running your, I, I saw this cartoon one time, it was talking about legislative bodies like, like this, and it says, shows the legislative, shows the folks on the dais and shows the room, it says, budget questions and possible tax increases, there are all these empty chairs. And then all of a sudden, the next picture beside it says, cat ordinance, and there are people standing on the backs of the chairs in, in the, you're right. I mean, we had that same issue when I was on city council in Elkins. We had the state leader in release on the cat collar deals and stuff. And, you know, they, but over there, the problem you got to college, these kids are bringing cats. Oh, we didn't get an animal, adopted an animal, and next thing you know, it turns into an outside animal. And next thing you know, there you go.
I think it's just, you know, continually working on it and trying to get better. You can't, you can't, you know, you might not get it perfect ever, but it's just like, you know.
I know he used to take in a good many.
Yeah, I know, I know that at the shelter, there's fourteen now, at his, I don't know the exact number.
I know he's very much tender-hearted about that.
He is, and I mean, he works every day on it, you know, and.
Well, you've seen that little sign that says unattended children will be given a cup of coffee and a puppy.
You're right.
Yeah, yeah, so put, put, put ring in the paper.
I'll make that motion.
I hope all this is all correct. Properly moved to second to adjourn. Is there any discussion about that? No? All those papers, same five saying aye. Officially adjourned.